Us kind of deciding back and forth on positions. I think in the past, Barry, it's taken us about an hour, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, somewhere around, I think usually a little less, but that's, that's pretty good.
And then right after that, we'll be moving into the forty seconds appointment conversation, just as a heads up to everyone. Don't hold me to the hour, though, in case it's a little faster.
Or not.
We're going for about an hour.
We can make it fun.
Ben, you look good in glasses.
Yeah. Yeah. It, it came on fast. I can't see anything anymore.
I think we're almost ready, Barry.
Okay. I had trouble loading Legisstar this morning. It took me several tries.
Recording in progress.
That's all I had to do is turn my camera off and it would get fixed. Okay, like to call to order the Warkham County Council Special Council Meeting for January eleventh, twenty twenty-two. It's nine thirty-four AM, and we are meeting virtually. Uh, our first item of business, uh, of which we have two this morning, uh, special order of business is A B twenty twenty-two dash zero zero eight. The reorganization of the Warkham County Council for twenty twenty-two. So we'll start with the, uh, the chairmanship of the council. I would entertain nominations for the chair position.
I'll nominate Kathy Kirchner.
Kirchner's been nominated. Ca- Councilmember Frazee? Can't hear you, Car- Carol.
Starting off good. Um, I'll nominate Todd Donovan.
Todd Donovan's been nominated. Councilmember Kirchner?
Uh, yeah, this is not germane to your purpose, but I did receive a text that the normal link to our meeting is not on the normal spot on the county website. So I was gonna ask staff if they could research that. Please make sure that the, uh, link to the meeting is posted where people have been used to seeing it, so they don't have to search for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. We'll look into it.
Thanks.
Councilmember Ellen Boss?
These nominations need seconds.
That's a good question.
I'll second Kirchner.
I'll second for, uh, Carol's nomination of Todd. So, yeah, that's a good point, Ben. We should do that.
And maybe a roll call.
That's my last media, so I'm slacking. So, yes, let's, let's call a roll for attendance.
Barry Buchanan?
Here.
Tyler Bird?
Here.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Ben Ellenboss?
Here.
Carol Frazee?
Here.
Kaylee Galloway?
Here.
Kathy Kirchner?
Here.
Let the record show that all council members are present and accounted for. Um, so we're sitting now with, um, motions to nominate and seconds for Councilmember Kirchner to as chair and Councilmember Donovan as chair. Uh, any further nominations? Seeing none, we'll close the nominations and we will do a roll call vote.
Barry Buchanan?
Donovan.
Tyler Bird?
Kirchner.
Todd Donovan?
Donovan.
Ben Ellenboss?
Kirchner.
Carol Frazee?
Donovan.
Kaylee Galloway?
Donovan.
Kathy Kirchner? You're muted.
Donovan. Thanks, guys.
Okay, the vote is five to two. Councilmember Donovan is hereby elected chair, and I will right now turn the meeting over to Chair Donovan.
She'd want to just finish this one out here.
That's all right.
Okay, I'm trying to remember how we did this in the past. Do we just go, I've got the list. We go through each one and, and as we just did and call for nominations. Are we comfortable doing it that way?
I think that's the way we've done it in the past.
Okay, um, so I don't actually need to read off who's on the list we put in for this. I'll just go, um, do we have nominations for vice chair? Hi, Ms. Kirchner?
I'll nominate Tyler Bird, Councilmember Bird.
Have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Hey, uh, Councilmember Frazee?
I'll nominate Barry Buchanan.
We have a second for that?
Galloway will second?
So we have two nominees for vice chair, um.
I'd like to also nominate Councilmember Ellenboss.
Have a second for that?
Yep. Second.
All right. So three nominees, uh, Ellenboss, Buchanan, and I'm sorry, I'm not writing this down, um, who's the first one?
Uh, and, and Bird.
Bird, okay, Bird. Uh, so three nominees, Bird, Buchanan, and Ellenboss, um, I, so this is, do we want to do these as, uh, up or down, or just you, I'll, I'll go through and you have one of three names to offer as your vote, I think is the.
That's, that's usually what we've done in the past as at least the first try.
Uh, Ms. Ellenboss?
So, don't take this the wrong way, but we know how passionate we all can be, and some of us are more passionate than most. So, as the vice chair, do, would I get to, um, uh, gavel down the chair when they get passionate or, or not? Because if I can't do that, I don't, I don't really want to be the vice chair.
That would be a really good role for it. I think this is, if the chair has to leave the meeting or can't make a meeting, the vice chair is then chair. Um, but I like your idea. That would require two gavels. Any discussion of the, uh, the three nominees or this, this position? All right, seeing none, uh, let's vote. Go ahead, Kathy.
Tyler Bird?
Todd, Bird.
Todd Donovan?
Uh, Buchanan.
Ben Ellenboss?
Um, Bird.
Carol Frazee?
Buchanan.
Kaylee Galloway?
Buchanan.
Kathy Kirchner?
Bird.
Barry Buchanan?
Buchanan.
So I got, I'm counting four votes Buchanan, three votes Bird. Uh, next we have Executive Pro Tem cannot be on council of government. It says on our sheet there. So do we have nominations for Exec Pro Tem? Mr. Buchanan?
I would nominate, uh, Councilmember Frazee.
We have a second for that?
Galloway will second?
Other nominations, Ms. Ellenboss?
I'll nominate Councilmember Bird.
Second for that?
Second.
Ms. Kirchner? I'm sorry, hang up. And I'm in train.
I was just gonna second, but Buchanan got there soon.
Trying to wait and watch people's hands at the same time. I'm not sure how Barry was doing that. Uh, so we have two nominees, uh, Frazee and Bird for Exec Pro Tem. Any further discussion? Okay, let's have a vote.
Todd Donovan?
Frazee.
Ben Ellenboss?
Bird.
Carol Frazee?
Frazee.
Kaylee Galloway?
Frazee.
Kathy Kirchner?
Bird.
Barry Buchanan?
Frazee.
Tyler Bird?
Bird.
Uh, four-three vote, Frazee as Executive Pro Tem and cannot be on council of government. Let's remember that when we get down to that at the bottom of this list. Okay, now committees, standing committees, um, criminal justice, there are three positions, and we have two people who've clicked on the, uh, chart for that, um, so Frazee and Buchanan put in for criminal justice and public safety. Uh, we have a motion to proceed with that and then find a third person. Or do we want to just do the same? We'll go for nominations one at a time until we get to three?
Chair Donovan, I'm fine to move, um, the two forward.
Yeah, go ahead, Tyler.
Yeah, I, um, I've been on that the last few years too, so I'll check. If, I'll add my name to that.
Okay, well then, that's so, um, Councilmember Galloway, this is the first time I've said that. Uh, I think your motion was for the two names that were on there. Would you maybe amend that to have it as Buchanan, Bird, and Frazee? That is, um.
Really amendment, so moved.
Yeah, we have seconds.
Second.
Ms. Kirchner?
I just wanted to point out to the public who's watching that the, um, preference sheet on the Legisstar is not the most updated one, and that we were emailed one yesterday. I don't know if staff can update Legisstar with the most recent preference sheet, but just so everybody knows.
And that is a good point. Am I using, um, the one I'm using on Legisstar says updated preferences as of January tenth?
Is it updated? The one I just opened didn't show Frazee as exempt pro tem.
The one I have does show that.
Does it? Okay, let me see.
Yeah, yes.
Thanks.
But that's, that's a good point.
Oh, updated. Okay, I see. I clicked the wrong link. Sorry, sorry, everybody.
No worries. Uh, so the motion is for criminal justice and public safety. Buchanan, Bird, and Frazee. I believe it's a second for that. Um, any discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes. And get through everybody. So that passed unanimously. Uh, next up, the easy one, finance. Everybody but Ms. Ellenboss and myself put in for that one, and there are three positions. So how should we proceed? I'm looking for.
You want to remember your name from the list?
My name is not on the list. It's every, it's Galloway, Buchanan, Bird, Frazee, and Kirchner. And I am happy keeping my name off the list. Ms. Kirchner? I think, I don't, can't hear you, Kathy.
Sorry, I would nominate all the, um, council members who expressed interest.
Okay, do we have a second for that?
Second.
Right, so we have five nominees. Um, how do we want to proceed to get that to three? You have five people on committee, I'm sorry.
I would withdraw.
Okay, so that has us at Galloway, Bird, Frazee, and Kirchner. And I study voting systems, and I can't think of an easy way to sort this one out. Unless we do, uh, wanna, you know, individual nominations or a motion for some subset, subset of those, or a motion for some three of those? Ellenboss?
Um, when we were kids, we always did pick a number between one and ten, the closest get it.
With four people? Uh, Ms. Frazee?
I move to nominate Galloway, Frazee, and Kirchner.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Oh. Mr. Ellenboss?
Did I just hear? Galloway, Frazee, and who?
Kirchner.
Good. I, I would like to make sure Councilmember Bird's on the finance committee, because I really, I understand that his questions can be burdensome sometimes. But I really appreciate his questions. So, um, how would I go about doing that? Would I amend the motion, or would I?
I guess, yeah, then ask the maker of the motion for an amendment. I, I still gotta read the book, so. Who made the motion? Was it Frazee? Uh, actually, Ben, I think, Ben, you can propose an amendment, either way. And then we would vote on the amendment?
Um, I would move, um, uh, what were the three names again? Galloway?
Galloway, Frazee, and Kirchner. And.
Yeah. I would move that we, um, amend the motion to read, uh, Bird, Kirchner, and Galloway.
Okay, so we have a motion, uh, we got a second for, a motion to amend. We have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Bird, and you had your hand up a second ago?
Oh, yeah, I was just gonna ask, uh, Councilmember Galloway if she wanted to switch, because I noticed that she's also on a planning and development she was interested in, so. The, uh, I hear pull my name off in there. Okay. Place the finance portion.
Okay, um, we have a motion to amend then to have it as Bird, Frazee, and Kirchner. So this, uh, any more discussion, we vote on the motion to amend. Okay, Ms. Halka, call the roll.
Carol Frazee?
No.
Kaylee Galloway?
No.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
No.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
No.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yeah.
All right, so the motion to amend does not pass. Uh, the original motion was Galloway, Frazee, and Kirchner for finance and administrative services. Any other motions? Uh, Councilmember Galloway and then Councilmember Ellenboss?
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if it would be most efficient to have everyone vote on each individual nominee secondly, second, and take the top three?
I'm glad we got a motion, because I don't know how to, on, on all four remaining candidates, are you suggesting? Okay, um, Ms. Ellenboss and then Ms. Frazee?
Yeah, we, we could do that. Um, I'm, I'll skip what I was gonna say if, if we go there around, I guess.
Yes, well, we'll have to dispense of the motion, um, withdraw the motion, and then proceed the four names, um, Bird, Galloway, Frazee, and Kirchner, I assume in alphabetical order. So how do we dispose of them? Ms. Frazee?
So I just withdraw my motion?
I think that works.
And I agree with that.
Okay, and the second agrees. Uh, so can you put that as a motion, Kaylee?
Certainly, um, I move to take a vote on each individual nominee and to select the top three for Finance and Administrative Services Committee.
Okay, and when everybody's voting, remember, um, you only can have three, so.
And I will sec- I will second, uh, Councilmember Galloway's motion.
Thanks, because I forgot about the second. Uh, okay, I will proceed, and then, um, we'll do four roll calls, Galloway, then Buchanan, then Bird, uh, actually five roll calls, um, Galloway, Buchanan, Bird, Frazee, Kirchner. Go ahead, Barry.
I withdrew.
Oh, you withdrew, okay. Four roll calls. Um, okay, um, so Kathy Halka, we will start a roll call for, uh, Kaylee Galloway to be on Finance and Admin Services.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
If I'm counting right, that passes with seven votes. Okay, the next roll call, Mr. Buchanan has withdrawn, will be on Councilmember Bird for Finance and Administrative Services.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
No.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
No.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
That passes, I believe, five to, I'm having trouble keeping score here. Uh, so the next name is, uh, Mr. Bird, uh, Councilmember Frazee. And we do have the prospect of approving more than three people here, so, uh, a roll call on Councilmember Frazee for Finance and Administrative Services.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Discussion?
I am sorry, yeah, Mr. B, Mr. Bird, uh, we'll, we'll restart the roll call. Um, I should ask for discussion, so go ahead, Tyler.
All right. Councilmember Frazee, is this something you want to be on? I noticed that you're already gonna be on the Executive Pro Tem as well as the, the criminal justice. Then you add your name in for two other committees here. And it looks like Kathy doesn't have anything she's doing yet, and she only has her name in for two committees in, in general.
Um, may I respond, Chair?
Yes.
Um, so, uh, if, if I was chosen for this committee, I'd be on Criminal Justice, Finance, and maybe Natural Resources if I get chosen for that. So mostly, we usually have two to three. Most of us are on three committees, is that correct?
There is, but yeah, now that we have an extra committee compared to two rear.
And I am interested in the Finance and Administrative Services Committee.
Okay, any further discussion? And I want to make sure, we did have a second on, uh, this roll call. Let me just second it, so I know we did. And I, and I, let's restart the roll call. So this is, uh, for Councilmember Frazee for Finance and Administrative Services. Uh, let's go ahead.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Ben, I, we can't hear you.
We'll go to Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
No.
We'll go back to Ben Ellenboss?
Can you hear us, Ben? It's like we have an audio problem. Let's give him a sec. I think we lost Ben, um. There were four votes there, but we probably can't proceed for the next one. Um, until we get Mr. Ellenboss back. So I had that as four, yes, two, no, and, and we lost Ben. So.
I think he's reconnecting with audio.
Yeah, let's take a pause for just a second here until, um, we get Councilmember Ellenboss back. He's square there. Can you hear us, Ben?
So where are we at here?
Okay, we are, we are just concluding the roll call on Councilmember Frazee for Finance Administrative Services.
Uh, no.
Okay, so that passes four to three. Uh, the next name we have up is Councilmember Kirchner. So any discussion before we proceed to a roll call on this? All right, Kathy Halka, let's have a roll call for that.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee.
Sorry.
Yeah, um, okay, so proceed with roll call, I guess.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Um, yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
So that passed six to one for Councilmember Kirchner to be on Finance and Administrative Services, so we've now approved four people for the committee. Uh, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, if I understand Councilmember Galloway's motion correctly, I thought she was making a motion to have votes on all of us, and then the three that got the most votes would have this positions.
I believe you are correct. Um, so, uh, can Kathy Halka help me with the, make sure we've got the numbers right? So the, the final roll call on Kirchner had six affirmative votes. Uh, the previous one on Frazee had, I think, four affirmative votes?
That's correct.
Uh, and then for Galloway, what were the number of votes for that one? Affirmative votes?
Seven.
Seven.
Seven. And then for Bird, the number of affirmative votes?
Five.
Five. So by the motion then, it would be Kirchner with six, Bird with five, and Galloway with seven, and that would be Finance and Administrative Services. I got that. Uh, Councilmember Galloway?
Mr. Chair, I want to apologize for, um, perhaps my misunderstanding. I, I guess I was sort of operating under the assumption that folks would be only voting for three out of four of the candidates so that we wouldn't have been in a situation with four passing motions. So I really want to apologize for, um, my learning curve here. And, um, if there's any, um, opportunity to continue discussion, I, I want to, um, you know, honor that.
Okay, yeah, and I, I tried to clarify that we did have the possibility of, of approving four people with majorities. Um, so, you know, we, we had the motion, is there, is there any, anybody want to make a different mo- motion regarding this and, and what this? How we, how we should proceed? Councilmember Galloway? How, how we should proceed, Councilmember Galloway?
Um, Chair Donovan, I feel very strongly about having Councilmember Frazee on the Finance Committee. I do believe her institutional knowledge on this committee is going to be incredibly important for, um, the county. Um, so again, I don't know how to proceed, but I do want to urge my support for Councilmember Frazee on this committee.
I, I will look for, for suggestions on how to. We'd have to have one of, uh, Mr. Ellenboss.
Well, it seems to me that we voted and we have the committee, the top three vote getters are on the committee, so. Do we just not need to vote to affirm that, or, or have it be final?
That vote has, that was, that was, I, I'd suck Dana, uh, the clerk, the council's square lit up, I don't know if that was something point to make, but Mr. Bird, go ahead.
Yeah, Councilmember Galloway, if you wanted to give up your seat so that Councilmember Frazee could be on the committee, um, that would be one way to go about it really quickly. Otherwise, we, we had two votes on it now, or the vote to affirm the process or your original motion, based on our understanding and then the process itself, so. I would ask that, if there's not another, that we continue to move through this, so that people who are waiting in here for the forty-second appointment, uh, don't have to wait too much longer, but.
Councilmember Frazee, I, I'm happy, um, to defer my position on this committee to you, if that's something you would accept.
Yes, if, if you're willing to do that, um, I'd be honored.
Okay.
If the council approves of that.
Yeah, we could have a vote on that, in the past, I think we've, we've sort of done these, um, uh, I don't want to call them swaps, uh, as we go, but do we need a motion to then approve replacing? Actually, I'll, I'll ask for motion to re- replace Councilmember Galloway with Councilmember Frazee on Finance and Administrative Services. Mr. Bird, I don't know whose hand up went up there, I'm sorry, Ben, but, Mr. Bird?
Uh, so moved.
Second.
Seconded, Mr. Ellenboss?
You guys make decisions faster than I can lower my hand.
All right, so we have a motion, any further discussion? Let's take a vote on that.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Uh, no.
Is that called? Uh, so we, have we finished the roll call?
Yes, that was, uh, seven to one, I'm sorry, six to one.
Okay, all right, so that motion passes, Finance and Administrative Services is Bird, Frazee, and Kirshner. Uh, moving on to Planning and Development, we have another, um, large list of, of names here, Galloway, I had to increase the size of my font here. Um, Galloway, Bird, Donovan, Ellenboss put in, so we have four names for, uh, three positions, Mr. Bird.
Chair, uh, typically, the chair doesn't serve on any committees. The, I'm assuming we would be moving you from the rest of the checkmarks at this point? Is that accurate, or is it your intention to also serve on committees?
I'll serve on committees, um, I don't necessarily need to chair any committees, I, I think, um, and I, I don't know if I necessarily need to serve on this one, but, um, I, I like this one, um, I think Mr. Buchanan was chairing Public Safe, Criminal Justice and Public Safety when he was Council Chair. So, I'll, I'll keep my hat in the ring for now. And he's Mr. Ellenboss.
So, I, I would like to stay on this committee, and, um, I, even though Councilmember Donovan and I don't see eye to eye on all things, I do appreciate his input on this committee, so. I would like to see Councilmember Donovan remain on the committee, and after that, you guys can figure it out, so I, I'll move myself and Councilmember Donovan.
A motion, we have a second for that motion, Mr. Bird.
Give me a second, I want, uh, Councilmember Galloway. Do, do you want this committee?
Um, yes, I'd be honored to serve on this committee.
Okay, all right, maybe I'll pull off, so that, then you'll have your three. Okay, I'll move this slate of three, Councilmember Galloway, Donovan, and Ellenboss.
Okay.
You mean to talk?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I just, Ben, can you withdraw your motion, then we'll get to Mr. Bird's motion?
Uh, yeah, or I'll accept that as an amendment, whichever way you want to go.
Uh, that sounds.
You didn't have a second, so.
Oh, yeah, there you go, okay, there was no. So we have a motion, uh, we, we did not get a second on Mr. Boss's motion, because I was not on the ball there, but now we have a motion for uh, Galloway, Donovan, and Ellenboss for Planning and Development, we have a second for that.
Second.
Okay, and we'll take a vote on that, and let's just further discussion. Okay, Kathy Halka, can you call the roll?
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yep. Okay, that motion passes unanimously, and for those following along at home, we are not yet a quarter through this list. We're, we're making good time, uh, okay, so Public Works, we have three names on my checklist, Galloway, Buchanan, and Kirshner.
Move Galloway, Buchanan, and Kirshner.
Second.
Second, okay, any discussion on that for Public Works and Health? All right, saying no hands going up, uh, let's take a roll call on that.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously, uh, next, we have Natural Resources, and the, my list has Galloway, Donovan, uh, Ellenboss, and Frazee. And I can, uh, Ms. Frazee, go ahead.
Um, I'm trying to see how many we're all on, how many committees, I would be willing to withdraw my name from Natural Resources. Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Ellenboss, let's start your hand moving.
Oh, I was just gonna say that I could, in order to expedite it, I could pull my name, but, um, I think if Frazee pulls her, we're down to three, right?
Okay, we need to be below three, I think, so, we have offers from Frazee and Ellenboss to, um, that off the meeting that starts us off most council meetings at nine o'clock in the morning, um. We do, uh, I'll do rock, paper, scissors for it, or we just go with the first, uh, volunteer, which was Carol. Hearing nothing else, um, uh, do we have a motion then for Galloway, Donovan, and Ellenboss to be Natural Resources?
Move Galloway, Donovan, and Ellenboss.
Second.
That's seconded, any further discussion, Mr. Ellenboss?
So is that the same as we have for the Planning and Development Committee, or are we? And if it is, does that cause an issue or anything?
Uh, it's just be a quorum, potential quorum issue with the same three people, um, it's crazy.
Yeah, I just hear, Ben, if you're reluctant to be on that or want to withdraw, I could put my name back in, I, I'm just hearing you hedging a little, this might not be your.
No, it's actually.
I know it's not the nine thirty AM.
Yeah, that doesn't bother, it's not, it's, it's actually probably my favorite committee, because I'm interested in the topics every time, but I just, uh, procedurally, it's probably easier, if it's still the same, I'll, I'll just stay on it, then if, um, myself, Donovan, and Galloway.
Okay, um, this is my first meeting chairing, did we have a roll call on this one yet? We have a motion for Galloway, Donovan, and uh, Ellenboss. Let's have a roll call on that, if we haven't done so yet.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously, uh, two members from that committee are then selected to serve on the Lake Walkin Policy Group, uh, which meets about four times a month on Mondays at three. And I think I have been doing that, and Mr. Ellenboss, so of the three, those three committee members, we have a motion, this seems more like something that committees should do, but it's on our, our, our list right now. Uh, of the Galloway, Donovan, and Ellenboss, actually, only Donovan and Galloway put in for the Lake Walkin, no, no, and Frazee. Um, who is not on the committee, so we have two names on the checklist that had put in for the two spots on the Lake Walkin Policy Group, Mr. Ellenboss?
I was just gonna say, um, that if you and Kaylee wanted to do that, that's fine with me.
Okay, I, I enjoy doing it, um, and we have a motion for.
I'll second Councilmember Ellenboss's motion to nominate Galloway and Donovan.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, see you then, uh, Kathy Halka, can you call the roll?
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously, Galloway and Donovan on the Lake Walkin Policy Group. Uh, this next one hopefully will be easy, not that these have been tough, Behavioral Advisory Committee, we have one name put in there, and that is Councilmember Buchanan, if we have any motion.
Move to appoint Buchanan to the Behavioral Health Advisory Committee?
Waiting for a second, we got a second discussion, all right, let's take a roll call on that.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
All right, and that, that's all passes unanimously, next, we have the Bellingham International Airport Advisory Committee, I'm not sure when this one meets. Um, two names put in for that one, Ellenboss and Frazee, we just need to get that down to one, uh, Councilmember Frazee.
Wanted to know if, um, Councilmember Ellenboss would like to swap, sort of, like, if he does the airport advisory, and I do the Child and Family Task Force.
Um, I, I'm, I, you know, the Bellingham International Airport Advisory Committee, I don't, the, we rarely get invites to any of those meetings, so. Um, I don't, if you would like to be on it, that's fine with me.
Okay, I, I would, and I would like to be on the Child and Family Task Force, so I'm trying to get some buy-in there.
We'll get to that one, but I appreciate the, the lead on that. Uh, so do we have a motion then for Airport Advisory Committee?
I'll move that Councilmember Frazee, you know, uh, appointed to that position.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second for Frazee Airport Advisory Committee, any more discussion? Let's vote.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
All right, and that is all passes unanimously, uh, Frazee Airport Advisory Committee, and I think Ben's right, they don't, I was, did that briefly, and we, we didn't meet very often, at least they didn't tell us that they were meeting. Uh, the next one, Bellingham Regional Chamber, I'm sorry, Mr. Ellenboss, go ahead.
Yeah, I think what ended up happening there is, um, one of the first meetings we had, we voted to combine two committees. And so after those committees got combined, and I don't remember the name of both of them, but they had to do with the airport, after that, I don't ever recall us getting invites anymore. Which is kind of disappointing, because there was really interesting information in that meeting.
Yeah, that might be one we got to follow up on, so.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so Bellingham Regional Chamber of Commerce, we have Galloway and Bird have put in for that one, uh, Councilmember Galloway.
I am happy to withdraw and defer to Councilmember Bird for this position.
I, looking for a motion.
Nominate Councilmember Bird.
Second.
Any discussion?
Thanks, Kaylee.
Let's have a roll, yeah, thanks, let's have a roll call for, uh, Bird, Bellingham Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirshner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That as well passes unanimously, uh, the next one, Birch Bay Library Facility, is this new, is there anybody, yeah, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, it's new, I'm gonna, I will move Buchanan, Ellenboss, and Frazee. Because those are the three people that represent the Birch Bay District.
Dana has her hand raised.
Todd, you're, we can't hear you, but, I just, I just wanted to let you know that this will be a position, these positions will only exist if the, uh, the new library passes in February.
Okay, um, thanks, uh, so, Mr. Buchanan, are you okay with your name being put in?
Yeah, that makes total sense to have people that represent that district.
All right, uh, Ms. Kirshner?
Um, I'm not opposed to this committee, but I'm wondering where it came from, um, since it's new to all of us. It seems like we would be the ones that were approving a new committee.
That is an interesting question.
From the library folks, I mean, how come it's a?
This is Dana Brown Davis, it's a requirement that three councilmembers sit on the board if the library, um, uh, passes in February, so we just wanted to kind of preempt, so we would be ready for councilmembers to be on that board.
Hmm, a requirement, a state law, uh, for a library, a state law, okay. Why don't we sit on any other library boards?
Uh, I don't know, I could check into that for you, let you know.
Wanting us to sit on every library board, but it just seems interesting that this popped up, thanks, Dana.
Yeah, Councilmember Kirshner raises a very interesting question there, uh, Mr. Ellenboss, and then Ms. Frazee.
I'm just gonna speculate, but maybe that has something to do with the way the funding's coming down for it. And I would speak in favor of the three for the reason stated. And also, I'd like to say that, um, the Birch Bay communities kept me in the loop. Um, we've met with them down there a few times, and every time I've gone down there, I know that Councilmember Buchanan's been involved as well, and I, I do not know about Councilmember Frazee, but I'm assuming that they had her in the loop as well, so, I, I like the three names for the reasons you guys stated, and the fact that I know that that we've been involved.
Uh, Councilmember Frazee, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I didn't hear, uh, Councilmember Ellenboss's, but I was in the loop, I wasn't in a loop with the library, if that was what you were talking about, I was trying to find the, um, Yeah, I didn't hear, uh, Councilmember Ellenboss's, but I was in the loop. I wasn't in a loop with the library, if that was what you were talking about. I was trying to find the, um, explanation, but I, I. Read somewhere that it's just a temporary, um, board as the. Tax levy or whatever comes forward, but I'm not clear and I couldn't find it right now. Um, I don't think it's gonna be a permanent library thing. But I'll have to look into it more.
Uh, any further discussion on those three names, Ellenboss, Frazee and Buchanan for Birch Bay Library Facility? Seeing none, let's have a roll call.
Could you please clarify who seconded Councilmember Bird's motion?
I did.
Thank you.
Just now.
I'll call the roll. Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
All right, uh, next we ha, then that passes unanimously. So next we have Business Commerce Advisory Committee, non-voting member. And Councilmember Galloway and Councilmember Bird have put in for this. Do we have a motion? Mr. Bird?
Kayla, I'm gonna ask, uh, would you allow me to have this? I've been waiting for the last five years to be on this committee and Seth Paul and Redd have, uh, bumped me off. The last four, so they, I, I'd like to be able to finally do it. Would that be all right with you?
Certainly, Mr. Bird, and count me in as an ally if there's ever anything I can do to help.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
All right, we got a, Mr. Buchanan.
I would move to nominate Mr. Bird.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second for Business and Commerce Advisory Committee. Mr. Bird's been waiting very patiently for, we have a roll call on that.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Her, uh, Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Uh, that passes unanimously. Uh, next, Child and Family Wellbeing Task Force. Councilmember Frazee and Councilmember Ellenboss have checked the boxes for that one. Do we have a motion, uh, Councilmember Galloway?
I move to appoint Councilmember Carol Frazee to the Child and Family Wellbeing Task Force.
Second.
Okay, we got a second, any discussion? All right, seeing none. Uh, we have a motion for Frazee Child and Family Wellbeing Task Force. It's, do a roll call.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Uh, next, two are Council of Governments and the Executive Pro Tem cannot serve. On either of these, um, so the first, uh, item of business here is appointing two members to serve, um, the. Council of Governments and the names we have in are Galloway, Frazee and Kirshner. And then after that, we point one of those people, uh, to the related positions, so I think Mr. Bird and then Ms. Frazee.
I will nominate Galloway and Kirshner.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second, and Ms. Kirshner.
I just want to say, I don't think Carol can serve because she's the executive pro tem. I want to say that for the public, right?
That's, that's correct, yeah.
Any further discussion? All right, let's do a roll call on, I'm going to search Galloway and Kirshner for Council of Governments.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. And now from, uh, that list, appoint one of those two, uh, Councilmember Frazee.
I'd like to appoint, um, Councilmember Galloway.
Second.
Okay, uh, we have a motion to have Councilmember Galloway be the, also serve on the Exec and Transportation Policy Board, or whatever that is for this cog thing. Uh, we'd have a second, any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Kathy Halka, please call the roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Uh, next is Developmental Disabilities Board, and we don't have anybody who's put in, Ms. Kirshner.
I'll nominate myself.
I will second that. Um, I don't miss in the past. Uh, any discussion on this? Okay, seeing none, let's call the roll. Uh, the motion is Kirshner for Developmental Disabilities Board.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
All right, that passes unanimously. Uh, next, Drayton Harbor and Portage Bay Shellfish Protection Districts, um. I used to be two things, well, fortunately it's one now, and we have one naming for that, that is Mr. Ellenboss, Mr. Buchanan.
I would move, uh, Councilmember Ellenboss.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion? All right, seeing none. Uh, Kathy, can you call the roll on Ellenboss for the Shellfish Protection Districts?
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Uh, next, we have the EMS Oversight Board Representative, followed by EMS Oversight. Alternative, Mr. Buchanan.
I'd like to negotiate with Councilmember Bird. On the, uh, between the EMS Oversight Board and the LEFT Board, both of us have put in for that. I would. Like to serve on one of those, but I will let you choose if you would like to withdraw from one of those.
Right, Mr. Bird? Go ahead.
Yeah, that sounds good. Uh, I'll do the EMS, if you'd like to do the LEFT.
Very well, I withdraw from the EMS Oversight.
All right.
I'll withdraw from the LEFT Board.
Reminding we'll get to that one. Uh, so can we get a motion for Bird for the EMS Board Representative?
So I move to appoint, um, Bird for the EMS Oversight Board.
In a second.
Second.
All right, um, Ms. Halka, can we have a roll call on EMS Board, Mr. Bird?
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes. And that passes unanimously, if I'm counting right. And next is the alternative, so I assume that would not be Mr. Bird. We have Ellenboss and. Frazee put in for that. Motion on this, Mr. Ellenboss?
Which one are, which one is this again? Sorry, I was getting talked at.
EMS Oversight Board Alternative, uh, so I guess.
I'll withdraw.
Okay, Mr. Ellenboss, we have a motion then for the remaining person, which is Frazee.
Move Frazee.
In a second.
Galloway seconds?
Okay, uh, so we have Frazee, uh, nominated as the Alternative Representative for the MS Oversight Board. Can we have a? Roll call on that.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
It, that passes six to one. Uh, we are now, for those folks following around, tuned in for other things, we are halfway through our list. Making good progress. Uh, next is Flood Control Zone Committee Ex officio, Mr. Ellenboss put in for that, and.
I nominate Ellenboss.
Second.
A motion in a second, any discussion? Okay, Kathy Halka, can we have a roll call on that?
Kaylee Galloway?
Can you hear us, Kayla?
Kaylee Galloway?
She looks frozen.
Yeah.
Rural Internet.
In District One.
Yeah.
I'll come back to her. Uh, Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Go back to Kaylee Galloway?
Oop, I think that's a sign she's probably trying to log back in. We have a guest here, is that potentially? Kaylee logging in as something else? On the participant screen? But work on, uh, maybe somebody in staff can text Councilmember Galloway and, and see what's going on here, but that. Uh, passed six to zero with Councilmember Galloway back in the room, um. Can you hear us now, Kayla?
I can't, I think my internet crashed.
Okay.
I voted yes.
Okay, um, let the record show that that would be an affirmative vote. Uh, okay, where are we? Um, Flood Control Zone. Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force, uh, Mr. Buchanan has put in for that. Thank you, Barry. Uh, do we have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Buchanan for Incarceration Prevention Reduction Task Force, any further discussion or any discussion? All right, let's have a roll call.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Uh, congratulations, Barry. We also need an alternative. It's, nobody. Had a chance to check on the businesses and appoint one alternative. Um, so we have, can we get a motion of somebody who? Barry, do you know who does that right now? Who's the alternative?
I think Councilmember Kirshner might be the alternate. I'm not, that's just the top of my head, though, so I don't know how accurate that is.
A pretty easy gig, I think Mr. Buchanan's there all the time, but grab most for somebody to be the alternative. Alternative.
If nobody wants to volunteer, I'll be the alternate again.
I would move Councilmember Kirshner.
Second.
All right, we got a motion in a second for, uh, Councilmember Kirshner to be the alternative, uh, representative on the task force. We get a roll call on that.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Uh, passes unanimously. Uh, next is Intergovernmental Tribal Relations Committee, two appointments. And we have Galloway, Ellenboss and Frazee have put in for that one. Uh, we got a motion, get that down to two.
I'll move, uh, Councilmember Frazee and Ellenboss, since they both represent areas that, um. Include tribal relations.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion? Ms. Frazee?
I, I would like us to, um, consider Councilmember Galloway. I, I just think her experience and her. I think, you know, even her past job, I think this would be very helpful for our community if she was. On this committee.
Uh, motion, uh, that we have a second on is.
I can amend my motion to, um, nominate Councilmember Galloway and Councilmember Ellenboss.
And Councilmember Frazee?
And I would also like to be considered, I, um, this is something that I would like to work on too, and getting that communication going. Is really important and for our whole community.
Mr. Ellenboss?
Um, well, I probably. Talk with someone from the Lummy, um, Council a couple of times a week. Maybe not the same person, but so it, um, whether I'm on the committee or not, there are all relations there.
Okay, well, we still have a motion for, uh, Kirshner and Frazee, I'm sorry, Ellenboss and Frazee. Any further discussions?
I think it was, was it Ellenboss? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Do, yeah, let's double check on me, but, um, uh, I think it was Ms. Kirshner's motion, it was Frazee and Ellenboss?
Yeah, I seconded that one. She went, made a second motion, but it did not get a second.
We, we had some discussion of amending it, but I don't think that. Pass, so any further discussion? All right, uh, Kathy Halka, can we have a roll call on that? Uh, Ellenboss, sorry, go ahead.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
No.
Kaylee Galloway?
No.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
And that motion passes, um, now, next up is the LEFT Board, and pardon me for looking at this screen. Eyes bugging out here. Uh, we have a discussion of this previously, the names on the list are Bird and Buchanan. Uh, do we have a motion, Mr. Bird, go ahead?
I'll move to appoint Councilmember Buchanan.
Second?
Galloway second?
Okay, got a motion in a second for Buchanan, uh, for the LEFT Board, any discussion? Have a roll call on that.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Um, next, Local Emergency Planning Committee. We have two names for one spot, Ellenboss and Bird. We have a motion for this.
I'll move to appoint me.
You got a second for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, I.
I was gonna second it for Ben, but.
So take that as Mr. Ellenboss, uh, stepping aside. So, um, a motion for Councilmember Bird. To serve on the Local Emergency Planning Commission. Can we have a vote on that?
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes. And that passes, uh, unanimously. Uh, next is Lummy Island Ferry Advisory Committee, also known as Lifac. Uh, point one nominee, I am the only.
I'll nominate Councilmember Donovan, thank him for doing that.
And I will second.
Right, any discussion on this?
I third.
Okay, Kathy Halka, can we have a roll call on Donovan for Lifac?
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
All right, and that passes unanimously. The next one is, it says optional, it's two, up to two alternatives, uh, for Lifac. I guess if I don't make a meeting, um, I think we've done this in the past, but is there a desire to, there's two names? is there a desire to, there's two names.
I'll nominate Councilmember Ellenboss and Councilmember Frazee for the alternative positions on Lifec.
And I will second that.
All right, any discussion? Okay, moving along, we got a motion for, I'm sorry, Mr. Ellenboss, go ahead.
I don't ever recall you missing one of those meetings, Todd. You're, you're normally there.
It's a, yeah, it's, especially if it's on Zoom. Um, so I don't think I really have to do much with this one, but, so we have a motion, uh, for, uh, Ellenboss, sorry, who was it? Ellenboss and Frazee. Uh, can we get a roll call on that?
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Uh, moving along, Marine Resources Committee, myself and Councilmember Ellenboss put in for that. Um, I've done it before. It meets at like four or five in the afternoon on Thursdays, so then if that's something you want to keep doing, uh, go ahead, Mr. Ellenboss.
I also enjoy this committee, but that is the worst time of day and worst day of the week for me, so, um, I did it last year and it was, um. I, you know, when I made meetings, it was partial meetings, so if you would like to do it, Todd, I would yield.
I will, yeah, I mean, it is, it's a tough time spot for me too, but I'll, I'll give it a shot. Um.
I move, uh, move to appoint Donovan.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second for Donovan from Marine Resource Committee. Any discussion? Have a vote on that.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Uh, next, North Sound Behavioral Health Executive Committee. We have Buchanan and Kirschner have put in for that. We have a motion. Mr. Buchanan?
I nominate Kirschner and I will withdraw.
That makes it simple.
Second.
Second. Okay, I'm assuming Ms. Kirschner accepts the nomination because she checked off the box here.
Yeah.
Any discussion? All right, let's have a roll call on that one.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. All right, make sure I'm not missing one here. Northwest Clean Air Agency is next, Newwaka. Um, Ellenboss and Donovan have put in for that. Can we get a motion? Mr. Ellenboss?
Oh, no.
I didn't quite hear that. Um, your, your, your audio broke up a little bit.
I will nominate Donovan.
Second.
All right, any discussion about this? Okay, Donovan for Northwest Clean Air Agency. I'm sorry, that, we're in the, yeah, Northwest Clean Air Agency. Uh, any discussion? Okay, Kathy Halker, let's have a roll call on that.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Passes unanimously. Uh, next, Northwest Regional Council, and I believe Ms. Kirschner put in for that. Can we have a motion?
Move to nominate, uh, Kirschner.
Second.
Hey, any, we got a motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, Kathy Halker, can we have a roll call on that?
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
All right, and that passes unanimously. Uh, next, we got the Public Defender Advisory. Just doesn't say Advisory Board, says Public Defender Advisory.
You're missing Opportunity Council, Councilmember Donovan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, Opportunity Council, we have Galloway and Kirschner.
And I would like to nominate, uh, Galloway and remove my name from the, from the list.
I will second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, Galloway for Opportunity Council. Can we get a roll call on that?
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
I voted yes. I don't have my sound on. Okay, that passes unanimously. Um, that was Opportunity Council. Now we're at Public Defense, Public Defense Advisory. Um, Bennett, you've put in for that. I don't think I see any other, other names on that. Next time I'll have a paper thing I can check off, but I can't do that on my screen. So do we have a motion for Public Defense Advisory?
Nominate Ben Ellenboss.
I heard.
I'll second Carol's.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for Ellenboss. Any discussion? Can we have a roll call on that?
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes, and I have a question on, um.
Okay. Uh, that passed unanimous. Mr. Ellenboss, what's your question?
Who was that before?
Anybody know? And it's, it's, it just says Public Defense Advisory.
That was me. I was that. I think they met one time last year.
All right. And is it have a, is it a board or a committee? Just our list?
It's made up of council, county staff.
Okay. All right, well, thanks for doing that. Uh, next, we have Public Health Advisory Board with Buchanan and Kirschner's, uh, names in for that. Can we?
And I'll, I'll withdraw my name and nominate Councilmember Buchanan.
Second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second for Buchanan for Phab, Public Health Advisory Board. Any discussion? Kathy Halker, can we have a roll call?
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Uh, if I'm not missing anything, next is Solid Waste Advisory. I think it's a board or a committee. Um, Ms. Frazee's put in for that to continue after you're doing that, and no other names. Do we have a motion?
Move Frazee.
Second.
Motion in a second for Frazee for Solid Waste Advisory. I'll just call. Uh, can we have a roll call on that, Kathy?
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Uh, next is the Stakeholder Advisory Committee. Mr. Buchanan has put his name in for that, and do we have a motion?
I'll move Councilmember Buchanan, Mr. Stakeholder Advisory Committee.
Okay, we got.
What is that? What, what, very, what is that one again?
That's, that's the new advisory committee that was established to work through the needs assessment process for the jail.
Oh, okay, all right.
It's connected to the incarceration.
Very descriptive name.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Maybe any stakeholder group, but yeah, that, that, that's a large, large group. Uh, so we have a motion and a second. We have a roll call on Buchanan for Stakeholder Advisory Committee.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. All right, uh, WASAC, Washington State Association of Counties, is, I believe is the acronym. Mr. Bird?
That, I moved to appoint Katie, or Councilmember Galloway, to the WASAC Alternative Board Member position, and Councilmember Kirschner to the WASAC Legislative Steering Committee.
We have a, so that's, uh, skipping the, we'll get that, the one in the middle. I will come back to that one, but, um, we have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
I don't meet myself. Uh, so the motion would be Galloway as the alt, this is, the first one is alternate board member, because the executive is the active representative, council member is alternate, and then skipping to Legislative Steering Committee. The motion would have Kirschner doing that role. Any, Ms. Galloway?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would urge council to, um, support me for the Legislative Steering Committee, um, solely because I've have extensive background working for this legislature, um, as well as working with other counties as well. I think it's very important if the council is looking to increase its presence in Olympia and in Washington DC and throughout other counties, um, that my experience at all those levels of government would uniquely position me for that position. So, again, I would urge your support, um, to consider me for the Legislative Steering Committee.
Okay, any other discussion? As the motion stands, we're considering two positions right now. Um, alternate board member, Galloway and legislature, Leg steering committee, Kirschner. Any more discussion? Let's have a roll call on that.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
No.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
No.
Kaylee Galloway?
No.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
No.
So that motion that combined those two fails, that brings us back to, uh, the WASAC Alternative Board, uh, Councilmember Frazee.
I nominate, um, Councilmember Galloway for the, uh, Alternative Board Member for WASAC.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? All right, let's have a roll call.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Uh, now the WASAC optional alternate to the alternate, um, citing.
I would nominate myself for that.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion on that? Kirschner, optional alternate board member for WASAC. Okay, can we have a roll call on that?
Ben Ellenboss?
Um. I'm gonna abstain. I've left the room for a few minutes.
That's good.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes. All right, that passes. Uh, next is WASAC Legislative Steering Committee. Do we have a motion for that?
Move Galloway?
And I will withdraw my name there.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, Galloway, Leg Steering Committee of WASAC. Wait, any discussion? Let's take a vote.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
And that passes. Uh, two more WASAC things. I may be can do this in one motion. Timber County's Caucus and Coastal County's Caucus, it says optional. This is relatively new, Mr. Buchanan?
I would move Galloway for both positions. Vote those positions.
Okay, we got a motion in a second. Uh, any discussion? Okay, Kathy Halker, can we have a roll call on that?
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. And our final item, the Wacom Transit Transportation Authority Donovan is the name put in there. We have a motion for that.
I nominate Donovan.
Second.
Any discussion, WTA? All right, uh, Kathy Halker, can we have a roll call on Wacom Transit, uh, Donovan?
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. That is the end of our list. Um, so most people we've ever probably had watching are council reorganization. I'm sure everybody tuned in for this. So the other item of business we have for, um, a special committee, the whole is council reorganization. Can we take a five-minute break? I know that's what everybody's waiting for, so I can get some more water. Is that, people okay with that?
Yeah, I want to get a cup of coffee, so that's good.
All right, yeah. Uh, so staff, you got that? We'll, we'll be back in five minutes.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I think we should do every meeting, I think we should have a council member pick a montage. Um, so we can personalize the music a little bit.
That would be fun.
You gotta, they basically do the setlist for each council. And we got our retreat scheduled, we should, we could talk about that. Okay, we are back, we didn't adjourn, just took a brief recess. Uh, next item of business, everybody has tuned in for. Uh, is considering the forty second district vacancy and making an appointment. And the material we have on Legisstar does not exactly say how we are going to proceed, so I would get a sense of the will of the council. How we wanna do this and maybe get a clarification of what the nominees were told, um, in terms of. What they were expected, so, and actually. Mr. Ellenboss has already turned off his screen. He had recused himself in the previous discussion of this, I believe the. Screen being off is, we can count that as Ben has recused himself and you can correct me if it's otherwise, Mr. Ellenboss. So council, or, and Dennis, is there something you wanna say? Okay, thumbs up in terms of.
No, yeah, I just turned my, my camera off and I'll just listen until I'm called upon.
Okay, so you are recognized as recusing yourself for the record. But actually, Dana, can you tell us, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Bird.
Oh, I, I was gonna move that we have each of the candidates or give them three minutes. That's what we've done in the past, is allow them to do a three minute presentation or. This, you know, and then a couple minutes of Q and A if we wanted to.
We have a motion and Mr. Buchanan's thumb up, right?
I second that motion.
Okay, and Dana, just to be sure, can.
No, there was not, we, I just sent out the questionnaire, asked for the responses to be back in our office by four thirty on Friday. Forwarded those to council members and that's where any instructions ended.
Alright, so we have him, Mr. Buchanan.
So I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Bird's motion, I think having them give us. What they want us to hear in three minutes. And then us to have a chance for any follow up questions that we may have, so I totally agree with the motion.
Right, any further discussion on the motion? Uh, seeing none, let's have a vote on that. And this is a motion to give each nominee, uh, three minutes to present themselves and then maybe some Q and A. Grab a roll call.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenbus. Excuse me, Ben Ellenbus has recused himself, Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway.
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Alright, that motion passes six to zero with Mr. Ellenboss recused. Uh, that brings up the question of order, I can just go in the order that people are on Legisstar, which is Ellenboss, Seth Sick. Uh, Dykstra Thompson, is there any objection to that? Okay. Alright, first up, I don't know, I mean, I'll leave it to staff to, um, to time, I don't know if we wanna have a timer going or we just. Give people like a thirty second notice when they're getting up to three minutes.
I'll do that, I'll do the thirty seconds.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Galloway.
Sorry, point of clarification, will we be bringing, um, the candidates up to panelists so that they can turn on their video?
I hope so, can we do that? Have them admitted as panelists, um, so they are, if they wanna turn on their camera.
Yeah, certainly.
Thank you, Kaylee, I was gonna ask the same thing.
You're all a step ahead of me on technology. Uh, Councilmember Frazee.
Um, one thing we've done in the past with, um, I don't know how we would do this, but we've had people step out of the room. So that we can ask the same questions. Yeah. Um, if we wanna do that, have them. Get off the call.
Chair, Councilmember Bird and then Councilmember Kirchner.
Actually, we, we've never done that in the past because it's against the Open Public Meetings Act and it's against the law. Essentially, all candidates have the same right to be a part of the meeting as everyone else, and that's exactly why we follow that format of. In the judge appointment here earlier this summer as well, so everyone has to, has to be allowed to be online.
That's my question. And that motion passes, uh, now the WASCAC Optional Board, uh, Councilmember Frazee. And we got our retreat scheduled, we should, we could talk about that. Okay, uh, we are back, um, we didn't adjourn, just took a brief recess. Uh, next item of business, everybody has tuned in for. Uh, is considering the forty second district vacancy and making an appointment. And the material we have on Legisstar does not exactly say how we are going to proceed, so I would get a sense of the will of the council. How we wanna do this and maybe get a clarification of what the nominees were told, um, in terms of. What they were expected, so, and actually. Mr. Ellenboss has already turned off his screen. He had recused himself in the previous discussion of this, I believe the. Um, screen being off is, we can count that as, as Ben has recused himself and you can correct me if it's otherwise, Mr. Ellenboss. So council, um, or, and Dennis, is there something you wanna say? Okay, thumbs up in terms of.
No, yeah, I just turned my, my camera off and I'll just listen until I'm called upon.
Okay, so you are recognized as recusing yourself for the record. But actually, Dana, can you tell us, sorry, go ahead, Mr. Bird.
Oh, I, I was gonna move that we have each of the candidates or give them three minutes. That's what we've done in the past, is allow them to do a three minute presentation or. This, you know, and then a couple minutes of Q and A if we wanted to.
We have a motion and Mr. Buchanan's thumb up, right?
I second that motion.
Okay, and Dana, just to be sure, can.
No, there was not, we, I just sent out the questionnaire, asked for the responses to be back in our office by four thirty on Friday. Forwarded those to council members and that's where any instructions ended.
Alright, so we have him, Mr. Buchanan.
So I agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Bird's, uh, motion, I think having them give us, uh. What they want us to hear in three minutes. And then us to have a chance for any follow up questions that we may have, so I totally agree with the motion.
Right, any further discussion on the motion? Uh, seeing none, let's have a vote on that. And this is a motion to give each nominee, uh, three minutes to present themselves and then maybe some Q and A. Grab a roll call.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenbus. Excuse me, Ben Ellenbus has recused himself, Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kaylee Galloway.
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Alright, that motion passes six to zero with Mr. Ellenboss recused. Uh, that brings up the question of order, I can just go in the order that people are on Legisstar, um, which is Ellenboss, Seth Sick. Uh, Dykstra Thompson, is there any objection to that? Okay. Alright, first up, I don't know, I mean, I'll leave it to staff to, um, to time, I don't know if we wanna have a timer going or we just. Give people like a thirty second notice when they're getting up to three minutes.
I'll do that, I'll do the thirty seconds.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Galloway.
Sorry, point of clarification, will we be bringing, um, the candidates up to panelists so that they can turn on their video?
I hope so, can we do that? Have them admitted as panelists, um, so they are, if they wanna turn on their camera.
Yeah, certainly.
Thank you, Kaylee, I was gonna ask the same thing.
You're all a step ahead of me on technology. Uh, Councilmember Frazee.
Um, one thing we've done in the past with, um, I don't know how we would do this, but we've had people step out of the room. So that we can ask the same questions. Yeah. Um, if we wanna do that, have them. Get off the call.
Chair, Councilmember Bird and then Councilmember Kirchner.
Actually, we, we've never done that in the past because it's against the Open Public Meetings Act and it's against the law. Essentially, all candidates have the same right to be a part of the meeting as everyone else, and that's exactly why we follow that format of. In the judge appointment here earlier this summer as well, so everyone has to, has to be allowed to be online.
Councilmember Kirchner.
I was just gonna echo what Councilmember Bird just mentioned, that can't. We can't have candidates, uh, be required to get offline.
Alright, I think that. I would concur. We have everybody in the room, I'm looking at, um. I see Mr. Ellenboss, there is guest, I'm not sure who guest is. But I do not see Mr. Seth Sick or Ms. Dykstra Thompson. They're, they're popping up. Mr. Bird, we can say something.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask the candidates if they're in attendees, would you raise your hand please so that it's easy for us to find you and move you over?
Looks like we have everybody.
Everybody's here now, um, thank you all for joining us, um, we are. Entertaining a three minute presentation from each nominee and then, uh, with some questions. And I was just picking in the order that folks are listed on Legisstar and we'll go through. Uh, we won't have the timer showing, but the clerk of the council will give you thirty seconds. Uh, when you're getting close to three minutes. So, Mr. Ellenboss, you're first on the list if you'd like to take it away.
Alright, it probably won't take three minutes of your time, I'll probably yield the majority of that for questions, um. Ben Ellenbus, husband, father, farmer, refinery worker. That one didn't fit with the Fs, but, um. My family's, um, you know, farmed in the Nook Sak River Valley since nineteen oh two. Um, I've seen the abundance and the devastation that our river system can provide. I think now more than ever, the forty second district needs a, a strong, experienced voice in Olympia to. To help with recovery and long term solutions, um. As most of you know, I've worked at the Cherry Point Refinery for twenty years, uh, in the energy industry. I've been raising cattle since the day I was born. I farm about two hundred and eighty acres. And I direct market beef to the local food enthusiasts. Um, with agriculture and oil refining being the two largest. Economic drivers in the forty second district, I, I don't think, um. There's many people that could rival my experience in both of those areas. I've served as the president of the Farm Bureau in Wacom County, I've served as the vice president of the Cattlemen's Association. Um, just yesterday, I was in the meeting with the, um. Tom Vilsek, the Secretary of Agriculture, um, hearing the current administration's ideas on. On ag and, um. I think that I would be a strong voice for the forty second district in the senate. And that is my confidence in my ability to quickly step in and fill the role. For people of the forty second is my motivation to put by for the position. I'll yield the rest of my time to comment, questions.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Ellenboss, do we have questions for Mr. Ellenboss? Ms. Frazee.
Um, I, I think we need to acknowledge why we're here and, um, you know, with the passing of Senator Erickson. And with that, um, one of my main priorities is, you know, all of us getting over this pandemic. So, um. Right now, we have fifty four P COVID patients in the hospital. Um, since December first, we've lost thirty, people of thirty people in our county have died. And that's compared to in the last ten years. We've only had forty six people die of the flu in Wacom County. So, uh, my question is, um, what will you do to encourage our Wacom County residents to wear masks? And get vaccinated?
Well, I've been very clear on my stance on COVID, um, here on the council and. I think I've proven that I'll fight just as hard for you to be able to get vaccinated. As I will for you to make your own personal health choices, um. Um, I pinned the letter to the governor with, along with Eric Lautenbach, um. To get us more vaccines when, when it was looking like the vaccine distribution wasn't equitable. And I also stand with people who, for, um. Whatever reason, personal reason they have, I respect their, their health choices, um. You know, it, it reminds me of a time that I was speaking with Senator Erickson at a, um. At an event, and he started off the event with, with, uh. The statement that COVID is real. People are dying, and I suggest you protect yourself the best that you can. And I agree with that statement.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Galloway, I didn't see your virtual hand raised.
Thank you, Chair, um, Mr. Ellenboss, I, I wanna say thank you so much for your service, I know you provide a strong voice for your community. Um, and I know your experiences would provide you the qualifications to do this job. I guess from my perspective, um, I'm very, very concerned about your, um, kind of commitment to wanting to serve into. Offices, um, I say this mostly because as a former staffer to a legislator, you know, I managed legislative calendars. And I know the job is incredibly demanding, oftentimes, especially during session, demanding twelve to fourteen hour days, five to seven days a week. Um, and I, I'm quickly learning the demands of the county council job too, and I know you're very active in your community and other professional obligations, so. I guess from my perspective, I, I wanna hear, um, one, whether or not you would reconsider your, um, your request to serve in both. Positions and two, if not, then if you could really please specifically outline how you anticipate being able to balance. Um, all of, all of your obligations.
Well, um. I think the decision that we're making here is basically who's gonna fill the sixty day session. And after that, then the voters will decide where we go from there, um. As far as competing for time. Uh, I think that there is a lot of. I mean, just look at the council, look at the, look at the, um. Look at the committees that I'm on for the council and tell me that. That knowledge or that experience wouldn't be beneficial for the person sitting in Olympia to have, so. There's a lot of overlap efficiencies, if you will. Um, in this sixty day time period where I would be serving in both roles and. After that, we'll let the voters decide what's going to happen, um. And as far as my other commitments, um, I'm fairly certain there's a lot of. More successful people than me that are busier than I am. Um, and at home, I have a very strong and capable team in my absence.
Mr. Bird.
Alright. This is a short session, it's sixty days, counting today's council meeting or not counting today's council meeting. Uh, there is only three council meetings that will overlap with the legislative session. Is there anything outside of that that you would have a conflict with that you're seeing or. Between the council and the ledge position, other than those three meetings or days?
Are you asking me?
Yeah, yeah. Are you aware of any other?
Well, I'm, I'm sure that, uh. As you well know, I mean, we get phone calls at eleven thirty at night from constituents and. Um, that, I'm sure that won't stop. So, yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of things that will, that will impact my schedule, but. Um, I'm in a position where, where I can be flexible, which is. Beneficial.
And any other questions from Mr. Ellenboss? Alright, well, seeing none, thank you and, and thanks for putting your name out there, uh, Mr. Bird.
Alright, sorry, Chair, I, I got one more question, uh, Councilmember Ellenboss, if you are appointed, uh. It is a short session, you'll be entering it late, later than all the other legislators. What will be your top one or two priorities that you'll focus on?
I think my top priority would be getting there, getting my feet underneath me and, um. You know, meeting everybody that I need to meet in order to. you know, meeting everybody that I need to meet in order to, to do the job. That, my second priority would be, um, you know, flood recovery and long-term solutions. And then after that, it's just a myriad of things. Um, and I kinda, you know, I kinda think of them as agriculture is obviously an, a huge issue for me and protecting our ability to farm is a huge issue for me. And I think that, you know, doing that is beneficial for a, a lot of, of other things, um. And, and having a good working understanding of environmental issues from my time in college and agriculture will help, um, bridge some of those misconceptions. I think the same's true in the energy industry. Um, everybody wants to say we can have, we, we can either have, you know, um, it, it's one or the other, right? We're gonna have a clean environment or we're gonna have jobs. We can't have both. Well, my experience has always been that we can and we must have both. So that's the perspective I'll take to those issues. Um, and then from there, I, I kinda lump it all into hopelessness. I see a lot of, of hopelessness here in Watkins County. And I, I would, you know, do whatever I can to, um, to fix some of those issues that cause hopelessness. Uh, and that, that's a long list of things, whether it's, you know, mental health. Help with recovering, you know, addiction recovery. You know, right on down the line. Uh, affordable housing, you know, like I have, my children are, are getting up there in years that they're looking at, at, um, you know, I've got a seventeen-year-old, an eighteen-year-old, a twenty-two-year-old. And I think they feel pretty helpless when they look at the, the housing market. So, you know, that's something that's concerning to me. You know, just to name three things is, is hard to do because there's probably a list of ten or twenty that need to be addressed. And, and when I look at the prefiled bills, there's there's quite a bit of them that deal with these things. And I think we all kinda have the same goal. But we might have differences of opinion on solutions. And, um, I think a little real life, real life ideas, um, that come with experience will be helpful.
Any other questions for Mister Ellenboss? All right, thank you. Um, I'm going in the order that the names are in Legisstar, so, uh, next up, uh, Simon Sethzick, and I'm apologizing if I've pronounced your name wrong, please correct us on that. But again, you know, three minutes. Uh, the clerk will give you a notice right around two and a half minutes if you're going long. And then questions and answers, so take it away.
Great. Well, thank you. And to the members of the Watkins County Council, thank you all for being here. I appreciate it. To those of you that are watching from the different corners of Watkins County, uh, thank you for, for showing up today. Uh, because this is an important process. If I haven't had the chance to meet you before, my name is Simon Sethzick. And I'm interested in this position because I believe that Olympia needs a new leadership. I believe that Olympia needs people that are not necessarily politicians, but instead of people that believe in our capacity and our ability to come together, to work together and to make a meaningful difference in the lives of the people of Watkins County. You know, I'll, I'll observe the fact that, that in many ways I'm the underdog here. I'm probably the youngest person on this Zoom meeting. I'm not a politician. I don't know how to raise money for a campaign. I don't know how to talk the political talk. But you can call me naive, but, but if anything, I believe that the story of America is in many ways a story of underdogs. It's a story of people that believe they could overcome improbable circumstances to make a difference in the lives of their community. In my heart, I know that we are called to a better state of politics than our current one. I do not think that this is a job of sixty days, but rather this is a job every single day until the end of next year, when a new senator is sworn in. And we need somebody who needs to, to be there to listen to the people of Watkins County from day one. You know, we are in the midst of some of the most partisan times perhaps in our nation's history. And it's easy for all of us, especially those in my generation, to become disillusioned and disheartened. But we cannot be distracted by the petty and the trivial, the divisive and the demeaning. Or the preference to score cheap political points rather than doing the hard work it takes to care for those in need. I believe history shows us that in the face of difficult odds, people who care for their country and their community can improve it in incredible ways. We are not here in Watkins County a conglomeration of red and blue precincts. Instead, we come together to help those, whether it's in flood relief or housing affordability, in homelessness or in crime, to help those in need and give them the support that they deserve. I believe that we need a young, fresh and energetic voice to represent Washington. We are not only the future voting block, the future taxpayer base, but ultimately public service is about caring for the future. It's about asking yourselves the kind of question, what kind of world, what kind of Watkins County do you want your children and your grandchildren to inherit? I believe it's time for young people to have a voice at the table.
Thirty seconds, please, Simon.
I've been involved in Watkins County from the age I was about eight or nine years old, knocking doors all over, whether it was Republicans or Democrats. And what they've told me is that we need young people to be involved, young people that are experienced, that are familiar with the issues. I'm not asking that any of you consider supporting me because of my youth, but I sincerely believe that those in the past have not been inhibited by their youth. But that instead you judge me off of my ideas, off of the answers I provided to you in the questionnaire. And instead, off of your energy and our energy to make a difference in the lives of the people of Watkins County.
Thank you. Uh, do we have questions for Mister Sethzick? Ms. Frazee.
In keeping how, um, council, former council member Brown, um, always was consistent with his questions. I wanna ask the same question. And I wanna just emphasize again that we have fifty-four people with COVID in the hospital today. And also that, uh, since December first, we had thirty people die in our community and the reason we're here. Um, um, Senator Erickson being, passing away. And I, I wanna also say I'm the same age as Senator Erickson. I have, you know, my kids are the same age. There, and just to realize that, you know, he's not here for a certain reason. So I, I wanna ask, um, Mister Seth, Sethzick, um, what will you do to encourage our constituents to wear masks and get vaccinated?
Well, thank you, Councilmember Frazee. It's an important question and, and I would be remiss if I, if I didn't say that, that certainly our, our thoughts and prayers are with with the Erickson family too, as, as they wonder what, what the next chapter in their life is going to, to look like. As, as Watkins County looks for a new senator, that, there are those that are, are still in much pain and, and grief right now. But, but it's an important question and, you know, as, as I sent in in my resume, I, I spent time, for example, directing vaccine initiatives in the state of Colorado to make sure that those who, who would like to receive a vaccine have the opportunity and the ability to do so. Uh, so certainly we should continue those efforts to make sure that if somebody would like to, to receive a vaccine, they have the opportunity and the ability, uh, to get vaccinated. In the same way, we should empower, uh, our local officials and our local, uh, whether it be at the county level or the city level, uh, to make those sorts of health determinations based on the metrics of their county and their city. And not necessarily from a, a statewide, one-size-fits-all mandate, uh, coming from, from the governor's office in Olympia.
You have additional questions? Mister Bird and then Miss Galway.
Mister Sethzick, uh, same question that I had asked, or Mister Ellenboss. What would be your top one or two priorities?
Certainly. Uh, well, Councilmember Bird, the, the first priority, and, and this was, I believe, listed as, as Mister Ellenboss's second priority. And my first priority would be, would be flooding relief. We need to make sure that that as, as you mentioned in last week's meeting, uh, those that need help right now, uh, can, can get the help through both empowering our local officials and, uh, through ensuring that, that those in Olympia can do everything we can to, to take care of, of those who need it. And so that's something I look forward to working with Representative Shoemake and Representative Rulon. And, you know, I think in many ways this is emblematic of the fact that for all the differences we have here in Watkins County, there are certain things that we need to all come together for, that we all need to work together on to, to take care of those who need it. And, and the second issue, I, I would say that, that really is important is, is protecting Watkins County's environment. And, and that means a lot of things. That means protecting our, the environment of our economy. It means protecting our natural resources. It means protecting the kind of atmosphere and, and place, uh, that, that is Watkins when it comes to whether it's buying a house or whether it's getting a job. And so that, that's a conglomeration of things. But, but it's certainly one that, that any future senator here has to look at as we prioritize Watkins County and put it first.
I believe Ms. Galway for next.
Thank you so much. Um, I just really wanna say how inspired I've been by your message. Um, I, I too, as the youngest person to ever serve on the county council, can appreciate young people stepping up and running for office. So I wanna thank you for putting yourself out there. Um, my question's twofold. Um, you know, you just mentioned environment and I know in the last several legislative sessions, um, the legislature has made climate change a huge top priority. Um, many believing that climate change intertwined with economic development and recovery is gonna be a huge component of our next chapter here as a state. So I was hoping you could share with me a little bit more about your specific ideas for addressing climate change and perhaps even how it intersects with agriculture. And then my second question to follow that is, you know, there might be a diversity of opinions within, um, the Republican party on how to address some of these issues. I'd be very curious to hear from you how you plan to kind of consensus build or build coalition around some of these issues, especially among those who might not agree with you.
Certainly. Well, well, Councilmember Galway, first of all, thank you. And, and secondly, to, to that second prong of the question, I think that second prong of the question was, was in many ways, uh, brought about by, by what you mentioned earlier, which is that the, the agriculture community, I, I think absolutely understands that the impact of severe weather events, uh, can be detrimental to to the agricultural sector here in Watkins County. And, and that's why it's important, for example, that we're taking good care of our rivers, for example, uh, that we're making sure that the, the water adjudication issue is that we're listening to, to the voice of farmers, for example, when it comes to, to the Nooksack water adjudication. Because those will ultimately affect the way that not only the agriculture community sees, sees this process, but the way that, as you mentioned, the different groups and interests involved, uh, we, we'll see it. So the first step is is taking care of, of our natural resources here by ra- rather than viewing it as an us versus them, or sort of an agriculture versus the, the environment. Instead, we need the consensus building there to say that, that, and, and if you go out in Watkins County and if you talk to farmers, you're gonna help hear, hear them tell you that absolutely, of course, they care about the environment. Their jobs, their livelihoods depend on it. So rather than, rather than shutting them out of the process, we need to ensure that they're, they're a part of it and that they can, can be included in those discussions.
Any additional questions? Okay, Mister Sethzick, thank you. Again, thanks for, for putting your name out there. Uh, next, um, Tasha Dykstrip Thompson, uh, again, three minutes, um. You might get a notice that two, two thirty, they got thirty seconds to go. Just, just keep on going. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good morning, Council. I am Tasha and I want to say thank you for this opportunity to speak to you today and present my cases to why I think I'm the best candidate uh, to complete late Doug Erickson's term in the Senate. I, I know I might seem in a logical choice considering I've never had, held an elected, um, political position before and I've never run a campaign. Um, and I do believe it would be my intention to run, uh, if nominated, uh, appointed today. Um, but I do believe the experience and talents that I developed in my twenty-five years as a law enforcement officer are very applicable to the skills necessary to be successful in Olympia. Skills such as collaboration and teamwork, ability to read, interpret and, uh, apply law and policy. Ability to communicate, communicate effectively with people from all walks of life. Ability to find common ground with someone who literally has just told me how much they hate my guts. Throughout my career, when working with a group or committee, the question has never been about political affiliation. Rather, what is the common goal? To find what unites rather than what divides. That diversity in thought prevents tunnel vision because tunnels, no matter whether red or blue, can be negative because there's only one way in and one way out. The Senate committees have been assigned and I believe my work experience can bring fresh and a unique perspective. Um, the forty-second district representative has been assigned to the Health and Long-Term Care um, committee, which focuses on mental health treatments and behavioral ma- matters. Uh, also the Senate Housing and Local Government Committee, which has, um, a subunit of, um, dealing with homelessness to include youth homelessness. And then the Higher Ed and Work Fringes Committee. So those are the three committees that whoever you appoint today will already be assigned to. Um, I believe my experience, uh, street level experience with homelessness and youth homelessness, I can bring a unique, unique perspective to work with the people already assigned to those committees. But who I am today and the skills I developed during my career were first instilled in me by my parents growing up on a dairy farm in Linden. They taught me if I want something, I need to work for it. That out there in the middle of the night when the barn is iced over or the floods come in, it's not the government that saved me, but my neighbors. Watkins County has been through one of the most devastating floods in history and the neighbors showed up. Now that the waters have receded, they need someone to be a voice for Watkins County in Olympia. Someone who will find answers to what failed and find ways to fix it. My pro- promise is to be open to ideas and be collaborative with everyone while also being fiscally conservative and accountable to the people of my community.
Thirty seconds, please, Tasha.
Be conscientious of decisions I make and the impact on their freedoms. My goal is to give space for people to shine while respecting everybody. Individual liberties and constitutional rights because the strength of America has always been its people. So again, as I conclude, though I do not have a political winning record, nor have I worked in the White House, my resume does show that throughout my career, I have consistently and collaboratively worked with people from all walks of life. I bring a unique perspective coupled with a farm girl work ethic, a realization that I do not have to agree with you to be able to work with you. An eternal optimism that together we can do better.
Thank you. Questions? Uh, Mister Bird and then Ms. Frazee.
What would your top two priorities be? One or two, or go for it.
Well, uh, obviously, um, coming together on finding, uh, helping those that have been impacted by the flood. I have three, um, family members, um, who have been impacted by the flood. My nephew just finally got back into their house two days ago, so that's super exciting. And that FEMA has now, um, been approved. A lot of people, I'm on the flood Facebook page. A lot of people have questions. So just trying to clarify what's the best avenue forward? How do you use FEMA? What, you know, a lot of people just have a lot of questions. And so making sure access to information that is, um, easily obtainable and easily followable for people so that they can get back into their houses. That's the goal is everybody to get back in their homes. And then my second, um, priority is obviously criminal justice. Obviously, living through a lot of the session and the changes from last year, there's, there needs to be some amendments made. Um, obviously the people have spoken, but it hasn't been, uh, collaborative in the approach. And so there's needs to be some changes to the laws to get back to, uh, keeping people safe in this community and working together with people from s- experience such as mine, but also, uh, lived experiences and find the best way forward together.
Council, Councilmember Galway, I, I'm done going out. No, who had to hand up first, uh, Frazee? Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, thank you again. I'll stay consistent. Um, and I do wanna emphasize again that, uh, today there are fifty-four people in the hospital with COVID nineteen. And since December first, twenty twenty-one, we've had thirty people die in our community from COVID nineteen. So, um, what will you do to encourage our constituents to wear masks and get vaccinated?
Well, I, I think that, um, people that have, have chosen to be vaccinated are, I would encourage more options. There's another, um, vaccine coming soon. It's in, before the FDA for approval and it's a sub, uh, unit protein vaccine that is, um, consistent with the hepatitis B platform. So I think some of the more, um, hesitant people because it's a brand-new technology, uh, in the vaccines that are currently available. So this, this month, I'm hoping that becomes consistent and that might reach those that are hesitant. So I would encourage that if that becomes available and approved by the FDA that we can um, focus on getting as much of that available and making that available to people that are more hesitant because they have concerns about um, the, the brand-new technology and the long-term effects potentially of the current vaccines to get them, um, vaccinated if they so choose. And as far as mask mandates, I know, um, a lot of people are not, it's not very consistent. And that's some of the people that we, that have questions is some studies show that they are, um, useful. Most of it's N ninety-five, which most people do not wear N ninety-five masks. And if they do, they're not worn appropriately. Um, so, you know, we're two years into this, um, and yes, it is extremely volatile, um, time right now with the new Omicron vi- uh, variant and the impact on our community. But I would encourage people that, um, that want to wear masks, do wear masks and be vaccinated if they can be and hopefully encourage this new, um, hopefully this new vaccine will be available soon to reach those that maybe have been more hesitant. encourage this new, um, hopefully this new vaccine will be available soon to reach those that maybe have been more hesitant.
Councilmember Galloway.
Thank you, um, I actually have two questions um, unrelated to one another, so perhaps I can ask my first, and then have you answer, and then ask my second, if if uh, there's no others who have other questions. Um, so my first question is, you know, first and foremost, I am a huge supporter of seeing more women running for office and being in positions of leadership and um, especially in elected office. So, um, thank you for putting yourself up for this position, I think it's important to increase representation. Um, that being said, I'd like to hear from you a little bit about what your platform is and your position on empowering women and issues that affect women, including um, gender pay equity, um, childcare, access to healthcare, and a woman's um, access to her own reproductive health and choices. And of course, I know these issues are important to everybody, but they particularly hit home to me, and I would like to just hear similar thoughts from you on them.
Well, I think um, just running for this position like you indicated is empowering to women. Um, having worked in a position, or in a job where I was completely surrounded by very, very strong women, and I got into law enforcement at a very young age, at twenty-one, as soon as I was able to. And uh, having strong women build me up was the best thing that uh, moved me forward. And I think the big thing is um, to recognize women are there to be, help you be better, not be your competition, and so I would just always encourage if someone else is doing very well, another female, it isn't because they, that you aren't doing well, it's because they just want to show you that anybody can do better. And so, um, I think that's the big thing, just I I always, I think that also a good mentoring program. You know, I I think that you saw that when you were in Olympia as an aide, and and surrounded your s- strong women, and look at where you're at today. And I think it's not, I don't think you should ever give anyone anything, but you always need to help encourage everybody along, because you you still have to have that inner drive yourself to want it to be there, nobody can want it enough for you. So that's what I would just encourage is always find a good place to mentor uh, young women that you see that drive in. And as far as equitable um, salaries, I mean, I've always had the same salary as all the men that I've worked with. Um, so, you know, I don't, I'm not as well-versed in ways that we can do that better, but I'm I would always encourage an ability, or I would love to learn if there is a better way to make that more equitable, if there is a a specific job set that is not equitable in that way.
Can you have any additional questions? All right, well.
Mr. Chair, may I ask my second question?
Oh, I'm sorry, go, continue.
I just, I will yield to other council members, though, who have not spoken yet.
Anybody want to?
Um, okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, thank you so much for the answer. You know, my second question is, I, you know, I really, I I saw that you have your background in law enforcement, and I think that that voice is going to be very um, important as we continue to discuss issues around public safety and criminal justice reform. And as you know, in the last legislature, um, public safety was a huge top priority, uh, especially with consideration to racial justice. And um, I know you've mentioned that's one of your top priorities too, so I was just curious if you could go into a little bit more detail about what some
Uh-oh. We lost Councilmember Galloway before. The people can hear me, right, it's not my internet, okay. Um, let's just give it a second, she she got back on pretty quick last time, um. I- in the meanwhile, is there somebody else has a question, or we'll just kind of hit the pause button here for a second, um, Mr. Bird?
Yeah, I I have a question, but I'd say, I'm in agreement with you, Chair, we can give a couple minutes for
A second.
Return, so.
Our apologies, um.
It's probably the wind outside.
Oh, that's a good sign, she's logging back in. Hopefully, she's logging back in.
Thanks for your patience, Tasha.
No problem.
Yeah, Dana, I don't know if she's texted you, but if um, Kaylee's texted you anything about trying to get in?
No, I haven't seen anything from her yet. I'm assuming she's just trying to get back in, but I'm watching the the attendee and panelist list to see if I see her.
Yeah, she'll be looking back on our first council meeting, remembering all of this.
He's got me.
Yeah, okay, let us know when you, we can, you can hear us, Kaylee.
Um, my goodness, I'm so sorry, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, you were about to do your second question.
Oh, yes, um, sorry, I I'll repeat myself, hopefully not too much of it is repeat. Um, I was just saying, in the last legislative session, the legislature had prioritized public safety and and racial justice and equity issues. And given that your background is in law enforcement, I was just curious if you could share with us some very specific examples of how you um, hope to elevate um, our voice of our communities in these matters, and specifically around how you would hope to work with other um, jurisdictions, local government, law enforcement agencies, tribes, um, and others who have interest in these issues as well.
Well, throughout my career, I have uh, consistently worked with many other agencies, uh. While I was an intel detective, my specific job was to work with the the federal partners, specifically in Canada. Um, and the Coast Guard and other affected agencies regarding terrorist uh, and anti-terrorism laws, and so um, I worked very specifically with the FBI, so, and then that's on the work side. On the community-oriented side, I worked with Special Olympics Washington, so I worked with law enforcement agencies throughout uh, Washington State to raise awareness for Special Olympics. So I, um, that is truly one of my greatest strengths, is working with agencies throughout the state, and so um, and that's how I actually kind of got involved in law or um, politics is through WACOPS, which is the Washington Council of Police and Sheriffs. And that, and then advocating, so I worked uh, with Alicia and Sharon last year, uh, trying to advocate for what was good about the laws and what was not good about the laws, and so, because the life experience of again, applying laws as they're written and how they apply onto the street, and so I think that is my greatest thing that I could bring to the table is sometimes what sounds good on paper does not actually commute to being um, something that can work on the street, and so I think that is where um, I can use my experience and firsthand knowledge of that. And then, again, working with people who have different firsthand knowledges, so I've collaborated throughout my career, it's actually what I've been known best for, is the ability to work with a large group of people.
Okay, Mr. Bird, I believe you had a question.
Yeah, um, one of the biggest issues in my district that I hear from the different communities, uh, and it's consistent, is law enforcement, a- and then they really have a desire to see um, more support for law enforcement in their neighborhoods, they, I'm curious. With that said, how many people do you know, like, of that are also officers or previous officers that are currently in legislature right now?
I think there is one, oh, she's from the east um, side of Washington, she was former law enforcement, I think not in Washington, maybe in Colorado, if I crawl, call, and then there was one that's an active deputy, but I, if I recall correctly, this is his final term, and so, um, and I don't, I don't know specifically of a whole lot more that have. Um, I mean, I know there's several lawyers, I don't know if they're former prosecutors or defense attorneys and and involved on that side of the criminal justice system. Um, so again, I think that I'm one of the rare few that actually have uh, street experience of twenty-five years in law enforcement, I will be in Olympia.
I feel like that, well, to me, that would be an incredible boon for us, a- and the communities out there, um, would you agree?
I a hundred percent agree, and that's one of the reasons that I put uh, put myself out here to try and be a, um, in politics more, you know, for a long time. Just, I love working the street, and I love what I do, and I think it's a very misunderstood job. And I don't think anyone understands, we can't do this job without our communities, because it's what people want, is how we can best work with them and collaborate with them to give them the best sense of security um, that we can, some people, it's not possible, they have to be involved in the process, um, because they're the ones that are living it day in and day out in their communities, and so I think uh, collaboration with our communities to give them best that we can, but also having again, like I said, that real-life experience of taking what I know and how it works um, when the laws come in, and how we can make it more effective, because we just have to be more effective at creating uh, legislation to make all parties happy with how law enforcement is doing, so.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? All right, thank you, and thank you for putting your name forward and being willing to serve, um. Okay, Council, um, now, we have a decision to make, Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I would move to nominate all three, um, uh, applicants to this position, and then a voice vote to follow, to uh, to vote our preferences.
You have a second?
Second?
Hey, make me, let me make sure everybody understands the motion, and that I do as well, so all three uh, nominees are nominated, and the vote would then be, um, we would name it in one of those individuals as our vote, is that the motion?
Correct.
All right, uh, open it for discussion. Mr. Bird?
I'll speak against the motion, I think it's important that we have some conversation as a council before we vote on a final choice. So, yeah, I'll ask the friendly amendment. Uh, Councilmember Buchanan, would you update your motion to only the nomination of the three?
Uh, cer- certainly, yes, I and I, I just meant the the process to follow, I didn't mean immediately, so, yeah, I agree with you, Tyler.
Yeah, we can continue to discuss the motion, but Mr. Bird, we, did, did you want to offer an amendment?
I did, you accepted.
And they
The motion is just to nominate all three candidates.
Okay, so we've got that clarified. Ms. Galloway, did I see your hand going up, okay. Um, all right, discussion on the motion. I, um, Ms. Frazee.
Sort of about the motion, I just want to thank everyone for putting their name in and stepping up. It's not, and for answering all the questions, it was very appreciated, uh, appreciated, and I enjoy, I appreciated seeing the questions answered, because I could see the thought process. Even if I didn't agree on some of the things, it was good to see the thought process of the candidate, and it was very helpful, so thank you.